Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, May the 7th, 2024. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public and members of the board are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person tonight, we are at the Norton Media Center, 184 West Main Street. The meeting is also available via the Zoom app. Meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a phone number to dial in directly, available on the meeting agenda. Meeting will also be streamed live and available after the fact on Norton Cable Access and the Norton Media Center's YouTube channel. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, so they can be read into the record or submitted to members if you are not able to attend. So, we're going to dive right into our revised agenda here. I'll start off and I'll welcome Rob Welch back to join the Planning Board for his first session here. So, Rob, thank you for running, and you've toyed with it a couple of times over the past few years, so we finally got you in and got you hooked, so.
I have no plan, no clue. Just trying to help.
That's why the Planning Board is here.
Yes. Just hope I can find one here.
Sometimes. And Alan, thank you again for joining the board as a write-in candidate.
We do have to keep an eye on, so we didn't mess anything up that we did while it was going.
That works.
No pressure.
Size of the ballot, we're going to get some people there watching.
Okay, so we're off to a very sarcastic start to our meeting. Apologies if I encouraged that sister. So, in terms of Planning Board business and policies, I know Rob, Paul, and Brian will share you over some new member materials to go through. Obviously, there's a lot of it. There is not a quiz. Just from highlight perspective, we are under open meeting law, so anything we want to talk about regardless of any application or process should be in the meeting.
That's understood.
And if there's more than three of us, then open meeting law kicks in, and it should be a noticed meeting. If you, and I think there's an open meeting law rulebook and guideline, and obviously if three of us end up in goat city at the same point, as long as we're not talking about a project, it's not a problem, so.
I just got to watch what I do with this. I can't receive any text or anything on it.
From, what do you?
Anyone.
In terms of, I mean, you can receive messages, but in terms of generally the recommendation from, as a best practice, is if we have comments that we want to share with the rest of the board, they go through.
Correct. So, I mean, it's just so I can look at documents.
Yeah, no. But that makes sense. And obviously, Rob, you're the admin of one of the local Facebook groups, so I mean.
Let's make that separate business, yeah?
I mean, I always say, everybody can operate their own social media as their own, but comments on social media aren't part of the merger. So if somebody wants to say something on social media, come and say it again in the meeting. Great. But however we want to, I am all for sharing agendas, getting people here to talk about the projects that we have. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, Steve?
On social media, I think in order to not violate open meeting law, I don't think you can run a poll where.
Probably not.
So no polls?
I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah. No polls about projects that we have in motion. That's pretty, it's a pretty limited scope.
Right.
It also applies to any discussion, so for people discussing a particular post violates open meeting law. And I would just ask that anybody who is posting on social media not report to be representing the opinion of the entire board.
Yeah. I generally dip into it when I see somebody saying something wrong, or they're going wink, and I talk about this, and I say, "Plenty more meeting on Tuesday."
Yeah.
That's usually.
Well, I think I told you my policy for my professional life, and I just would apply it here.
Yeah, that's fine. So, just to, so if you go through that, or any questions about any of those intro materials or anything, please just, we have all been there going, "This is so much stuff." So.
Question, then, if I did have ques, you know, whenever I was reviewing these materials and I had questions on the decision, if I email you guys questions and we start talking about it, that's a deliberation, right?
If you have questions, they should go through.
Paul, myself.
Paul O'Brien.
So if I send them directly to Paul, I'm not deliberating?
Correct.
Excellent.
What I would do is forward it back to the, you'll notice every email we send out,
you're blind copied, so that way you don't hit a reply all and start a deliberation. So, yeah, any comments you have to the board, just go through me and go to Brian, and we'll distribute it as needed. And we're a resource to any of you, too. If you have questions on something, you know, feel free to reach out, and we'll be happy to help out.
Forget this question, which one's Brian's? You are. Oh, we're down there, okay.
It's probably just getting.
I can't read the papers.
But, so.
Paul's is made of paper. We couldn't find you anywhere?
It's okay.
It's okay.
We'll focus on the things we.
We have budget issues, we're not paying for a high-end plane right now.
That's fine. Speaking of paying things, we do have bills to go to, I'll share around. The board has maintained over the past, I would say, four years, the policy that the chair can sign the bills and then share them around, as opposed to bring them up in the meeting and individually motion them, and then the chair signs them. That is a piece that the board can choose to revisit if it wants, but until that point, I'm going to pass around stacks, and everything is duplicate because it is. So we have a Verizon bill, which is monthly, because why not? We have a WB Mason bill, and then we have another bill, which is for a peer review account related to Zero Mansfield Avenue. So just from a, in direct perspective, so the peer review accounts for every project, they are funded by the applicant, but all of the engineers and everybody who does the peer review on the part of the town is hired by the town. So they front the money, but we hire them and we're there, who they report to. So I'll pass those around. If you would like to take a look at them. Okay, go from there. At our last session, we had shared a couple of sets of minutes, and we decided not to approve those at this time. Do we feel like we're ready to look at those, or did we forget about them for two weeks and want to look at them again next meeting?
If we're out, we table them. I already reviewed them, so I'm good.
You're good to move forward?
Sure. I can remember what minute it is though.
I would, yes, that was going to be my next point, is that obviously you would, you would potentially abstain from that. So, let me find it here. So, two sets of minutes. We had, nope, that is not. Yeah, I can't find the agenda now. I had it all set up, and then I lost it. There we go. Okay, there we go. So the two sets of minutes, one was, I'm either going back a ways, because over the past period of time, Brian has been encouraged by, I think, everybody in Town Staff to manage his workload. We have one from November of 2022, and then another one from January of 2023, so I will take the oldest one first, 4th of November, 29th of 2022 minutes. So, did anybody have any addition? Obviously, if we have, if anybody's shared edits or corrections to Brian, that's fine. Are there any additional questions, comments, concerns that we have about those minutes?
I'd motion approve the minutes of November 29th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay. And as we're, the board is hybrid, I will go through the roll for the votes, so I'll just go down the line, and Jim, I'll hit you at the end. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm staying. Okay. Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. And the next set of minutes was January 17th of 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Laura. Any further discussion on the motion to approve those minutes? Eric, no. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
That's Steve. Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So, taking care of minutes and moving right along. As this is our first session with the new constitution of the board, generally, we do go through nominations and elections of the different positions on the board, which include Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and we also have a representative for SERPED, correct, Paul?
Yes.
So I believe, Steve, you've been filling the role for SERPED over the past period?
I have.
Did you want to just give a quick introduction of what that entails?
Generally, it just involves a once-a-month meeting, and they do have a couple of meetings throughout the year that people can go in person, they have a couple of events, but essentially, it's just a once-a-month meeting to listen to what each body of SERPED is working on throughout the community.
Southeastern Regional Planning.
Yes.
Association.
Economic Development District.
Knew I was going to miss that, yeah, I was close. But yes, so. Chair, obviously, runs the meeting, deals with all the paperwork. Vice Chair is the fill-in for the Chair if they are not able to fill those duties, and the Clerk. It's kind of third in line, but Laura, the Clerk is also, Laura's been serving as Clerk, is also the signer for, official signer for decisions and different items, so anything else that you feel is important to add in terms of describing their role?
Is the Clerk the one who keeps track of the conditions on the larger projects, or is that just something I'm doing?
I think that was.
Is that the Clerk's role as well?
I think that was shoved into the Clerk's role.
It was when I had it.
Yes.
And I think Julie had it before me, I think she was the one.
Yeah, I mean, and that whole process has only been started in the past five years since Scott Bishop was on the board, because he came up with it, so. I may be wrong in the years, but he didn't join the board until after next summer, first time, so. Puts a specific timeframe on it.
But that tracking sheet is critical, and that helped me, you know, not having been here for Zero Mansfield, that was a, that saved hours. And it was great to hear a few of the comments that confirmed it with Brian's notes, but that was, that was really important.
It works well on the larger projects.
Right.
It's overkill, first of all, so.
Yeah.
So, obviously, I probably shouldn't be running the election process for the Chair, so I will stop doing that. Paul has volunteered to kind of moderate that process, but start at the Chair and work our way down, and I'll stop talking.
Motion to nominate Timothy Griffin as Chair of the Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we, is it appropriate to ask, is there another motion someone would like to make?
I'll first say I would accept the nomination if.
Oh, okay. Tim will accept the nomination. Is there another motion? No? So, we have a motion in a second. Let's take a roll call vote. I'm going to start.
Tim, do I vote your? He's not technically the Chair anymore.
No, no, but can you vote?
He can vote for himself.
I can vote for myself, yeah.
I'll start with you, then.
I'll vote yes.
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 Jim?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Is it congratulations? I don't know.
And it's back to you.
Okay. So for the role of Vice Chair, Alan, I think you've been filling that role.
I only did it once.
What?
I only did it once.
Would you like to do it again?
No, I'm saying, I only, you only missed one meeting the whole time I thought. So as long as you keep doing it, that's fine. People are missing no meetings.
Well, not that you're used to with this stuff. So, and we'd like, you can nominate yourself, anybody like to make nominations?
I'll nominate him.
Second. Motion to nominate Alan Booley for Vice Chair.
I'd say, sorry, I'd say, right.
I'm not one for following the literal letter of the, yes. Alan, do you accept the nomination, or would you?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations for the role of Vice Chair? Okay. I guess I will go through the role, and Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alan?
Yes.
Jim? I'm sorry, that broke up a little bit, so I'm going to ask you to say it one more time.
Yes.
Thank you, and I will vote yes. And for the role of Clerk?
Although I'm a more part of the clerk.
Do you like the job? I'm just going to ask you better.
I don't mind it.
Okay, second, yeah. Just wanted to.
I will accept, but if somebody else felt strongly about wanting to take a turn, I have no qualms why handing it over.
Are there any additional nominations? I'm happy to nominate anybody who would like to. Okay. We'll go through this one more time. Oh, no, two more times, Alan. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay. And in terms of the representative to SERPED, again, looking for anybody who would like to take on that role. Steve, would you like to continue? Happy to nominate you if you'd like to do something else, and so that you're involved with other boards and a steward for conservation at the same time?
No, I'm more than happy to keep doing it. It's an interesting thing, I'll probably keep watching it anyways.
Motion to nominate Steve Marshall as the Representative to SERPED for Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, thank for I beat you there, Eric. Sorry.
Those lottery is faster.
Steve, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else willing to participate as the Representative for SERPED for Planning Board? Okay. One more time. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. So we've now maintained the entire slate of people on the board, going against, I forget what the saying is, is it Mark Twain? I forget. Politicians are like diapers, they should be changed frequently and for the same reason.
Yeah, that was Mark Twain.
It's a great saying.
That might wind up on Norton News.
Yes. Okay.
I believe there are two nominees, the signer and the alternate signer.
Oh, okay.
And we forgot that one years, we had to do it again.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So, as Brian has reminded us, we, as I mentioned at the beginning, over the past period, the board has had the Chair serve as the signer and, what was the other?
The alternate signer.
And the alternate signer. You said the Chair and the Vice Chair is the signers for things. We can choose to put that responsibility with anybody, it doesn't necessarily need to be the Chair, so we would need, but we would need motions either way.
I know, we just keep it the same.
Second. Although, I don't know, am I the alternate? I think I'm the alternate.
I think she was the alternate.
I think I'm.
So I was wrong in my answer.
I'm sorry, are you okay with being the alternate still?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then I motion.
That's enough. So, motion to retain? Same signer.
The Chair as the primary signer and the Clerk as the alternate signer. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. At some point, we should get DocuSign for things, but that's a whole other.
Oh, I would love that.
Some of these are just required for wet signatures still, but we can.
By the state?
I don't know, but certainly by the town.
My lawyers probably.
I wouldn't say, the state actually doesn't mind DocuSign, so it's probably a counter.
But, yeah, no, it happens. It's okay. So, we've gone through the election rolls, I'll move forward with that. I will just say, well, I'm happy to serve as the Chair. At some point, they do want an offer up here, so. Not continuous perpetuity. So, the only other item on our agenda this evening, it's a short meeting, probably won't be, well, probably won't be that short for a while, is just a review of our execution of conditions for the Zero Mansfield Avenue project.
Just a shake before we go there?
Yes.
Are we going to do more meeting dates? I think we only have May, are we going to wait till, you know?
We should do that, yes.
Yeah, you have to. We have meetings queuing, we have applications queuing up.
I've got a couple of things, that's the only reason I ask.
Yes, we should do it, we should do it tonight, yes. Would you like to do it now?
Sure.
Okay.
Could I ask if we could entertain a possible change to our start time? If it would lease the board?
We can entertain anything we would want.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything dramatic, but maybe a 6:45 start with public hearings to start at 7:00, if everybody could make that.
I'm good for that, that's better, no problem.
Again, it's open to discussions.
Seriously, if it doesn't work, just.
No, it's good.
No, I, for the foreseeable future, I'm working from home on Tuesdays, so it shouldn't be a big deal. I like getting out of here earlier, the better. I'm early, a bit early to rise, that works perfectly.
Jim, is that a problem for you?
During the fall, it could be, spring, not so much, but definitely in the fall, it could be.
Okay.
Can we just revisit in the fall?
We can revisit in the summer if we wanted to. Yeah. So you're saying the meeting, the start time will be 6:45, and then public hearings at 7:00?
We have public hearing, they would start at 7:00. It just gets us one kind of a little bit earlier some nights.
Yeah, I think we've generally been diving into things pretty quickly, so we haven't been posting specific times for this, for the hearings on the agendas, but, yeah, so I don't have any objections. And when I started on the board, I was commuting in on the commuter rail, and that was fun.
With more people working from home, I was hoping it would work, but I understand if it doesn't, so it was just a suggestion.
So, I don't think we need to necessarily take a motion on that, I think we've kind of gone around and nobody has any specific conflicts, so. We can, I don't think, have we posted anything for the next meeting relating to a time in terms of advertisements or anything?
Yes, we've, the 21st, we have set 7:15, but there doesn't mean going forward into June, that we can't do 6:45.
So, I'm trying, so the next meeting, same time, after that, we can do a little bit earlier.
Wait, June 4th isn't, is that?
It is.
That's the joint meeting on the 4th. Is it 6? I remember, could I ask? That's Brian when I was in the office.
That's the joint.
The bylaws.
Bylaws, okay. So, that's a whole separate discussion. Okay, so we have a meeting scheduled for the 21st. While we're talking about meetings, let's just keep going. So, in two weeks, we're meeting on May 21st, and then we have, we will be scheduling in June, and the 4th is already a joint meeting, but that's reserved, basically, for that, so that would count. That wouldn't be something where we hear of the projects, that's not the plan, correct?
Correct.
Unless we think we'd be able to finish in an hour.
I don't think so.
He's showing the full draft, so.
I'm going to say no.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Okay. So that would put us, if we wanted to give some separation in the month, that would be June 11th and 25th. That's fine.
That works.
If we have conflicts. Okay.
And for those ones, we're planning 6:45?
Correct.
Okay. And in July? Let me pull this up, because I know I have a conflict in July, because July is when everybody starts to travel.
Well, July 4th is the first day.
So, if we were just on the 25th, in theory, how do we feel about the 9th and the 30th? And I suggest, I have a conflict on the 23rd, so I just proactively didn't include it, but if we think that the 23rd works better for everybody else, then that's a choice as well.
I was just thinking maybe 16th or 30th?
We could do that as well.
Yeah, that's worked for me.
So it sounds like the 30th, and then preference on the 16th and the 9th?
16th and 30th.
And obviously, if we go home and realize, oh, wait, I forgot about X, then we can revisit them, we should try to come up with those, if we have those conflicts, come up with them sooner rather than later, or we're posting advertisements for special permits or anything. And if we get into August, if we're going every other, those suggestions would be, those would be the 13th and the 27th of August.
What about those? 27th, that's my dad's birthday, I might be doing somewhere.
Did you say the 15th?
The 13th and the 27th?
13th, sorry.
Steve, do you have a conflict on the 27th?
Might possibly not.
The 13th, you said?
We could do the 13th and the 20th, back-to-back, if we wanted to do that. Or the 6th and 20th?
We might be away from one, I don't know how they think of it, I just thought of one. It might be away from the 13th.
So 6 and 20? Any objection to 6 and 20? Okay.
Just on the 20th, if I just want to revisit the time on that meeting?
In terms of?
As if Jim's, if Jim's elected, it's 45.
Football will definitely be starting at that point, probably, yeah.
Yeah, and that will be, August is always tough, just to be honest with everybody.
Understood. Okay. So that gives us.
6 and 20, is that what you're saying?
Yes. That gives us three months. We can continue, or we can hold for there. I know at times, we've done six months at a time. If we want to hold off and do a few more in a couple, in a few weeks, we can do that as well.
I can keep going, it helps me plan for work trips, but it's too far out for folks then.
I'm good with September, I can go through that.
Okay.
After that, it gets easier.
Okay. So, for September, if we're already on the, I don't know, the 20th? I'm going to suggest maybe the 10th and the 24th, and avoid Labor Day weekend.
No way, Labor Day weeks, that works. No way Labor Day weeks, that works.
That works. Are we going to go to 7:15 at that time?
We'll review.
Okay.
But I would pencil in yes. The 10th and the 24th. Now, that should keep us busy for a while. Okay. So now moving along, where I said we were gonna get to a minute ago. To review an execution of conditions for Zero Mansfield Avenue. Based on our vote at our last session, which was on the 23rd of April. Is somebody, you're already sharing, perfect.
Yes.
So I was saying, has everybody had a chance to review, or did we send it out to everybody?
We did, yes.
Have we had a chance to review, have any questions, comments, things that we would like to address? Laura, I think you had one comment that you had mentioned to Paul.
I did, he was gonna go back to Town Council, I don't know whether she had weighed in or not.
She emailed me today that she hasn't had a chance, but she would respond tomorrow. And I, just, my thought is, because of the complexity of this and the potential for an appeal, I would like for her to review this, the whole, she hasn't reviewed the, this draft that you see here, my thought was after you all review it, we would get it to her.
I did agree with the edits that you suggested.
The court, we're talking about the reasons for denial, did you want to scroll to that, so, just to?
I apologize, what was the, you raised, you said you had a point or you wanted to question that?
The, the reasons that were put in for the denial of the permit were not in line. They were not the standards that we are asked to consider when approving a special permit. One of which was outside our purview entirely. And I felt it might just open us up. Very good chance they're going to appeal, and that just gives them more fodder.
Fair enough. So Town Council's been made aware of all of the reasons, we just asked her to help weigh in and advise.
Okay, so again, for the special permit, a super majority of five votes was needed, and they got four, so it was denied. I would say, but if they do appeal, I think, Rob, you probably haven't been through this, but you may get like certified mail with like legal documents, like this thick, so.
Tell them you do appeal, ignore it.
Town Council.
Circle file.
I do actually file them.
I do, I'm actually, and we have all the records.
I'm preparing for an accordion file.
And we have.
I got one ready to go.
Yeah, the town gets a record of it, and Town Council is.
How's that work, they, will they actually have someone come to your house and serve you?
That has happened, it depends on, it depends on the applicant.
Sometimes you get nothing.
Sometimes you get nothing.
You have no idea it was appealed until you guys see it on an agenda.
I know, I know Amy has said that she worked with one town where the applicant, their style was to actually have a process server show up as an intimidation tactic. Yes. That has never happened in the time that I've been on the board, but that first like, what, and being sued moment is, yeah, interesting.
It wouldn't be my first, I'm probably.
That's okay. But I think, I think I managed to warn everybody before the first one came on the last board, but it was close.
I have a sciences experiment going on my property, the sensors, cameras, all kinds of stuff to handle intruders, it'll be fun.
Okay. So. So we have the conditions up on the screen here. The basis being, I'm scrolling away on, it's a cheat sheet on your screen. The project would not be socially and economically desirable, and the advantages of the project do not outweigh by far any detrimental effects that such effects on the neighborhood environment shall be significantly greater than could be expected for development if the special permit approved. So. That speaks to kind of the five core aspects of our special permit granting criteria, so. Are there any additional, understand that Town Council is gonna weigh in on that a little bit. Did anyone else have any questions, comments, things that they wanted highlighted in the findings of the decision? That they thought were important to include?
Yeah, just real quick, it says motion fails up here, this is where, this is my experience, and then down here, it was saying motion passes, it showed the same vote.
So, the applicant applied for a special permit and a site plan approval.
Okay.
So the site plan approval is a majority vote. But the special permit is a super majority.
Ah, that's why, okay, thanks.
So, we have different criteria for site plan and special permit. If a project has just a site plan approval required, it is generally, we can require conditions, in terms of hours of operation, or set layouts of property, or landscaping, or any number of things.
Lighting.
But it is incredibly difficult to clear the bar of actually denying a site plan approval. In fact, the conditions that we set can't be written in a way as to essentially prohibit the project, we can't like.
You can't write something impossible.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So, that is, yes, so. General, if a special, if a site plan approval were not to be approved, then we would potentially try and figure out what we could do to get it to that state, or do something else. So, but the, the special permit is the higher level relief that they needed, and they did not achieve what was needed to get that. So, is there anything else? We wanted to add, if there's nothing else, then we would close it, and Town Council weighs in, it can be signed and filed. And then if the applicant chooses to appeal, they can do that, if the applicant chooses to throw this plant in the trash can and come back with the project, they can do that too. If there's nothing else, we'll leave it alone for now, I don't think we need to make a motion on not making any additions, so. Is there anything else anybody wanted to, before I move on, anything else that anybody wanted to bring up this? Okay. And that is the rest of the items that were posted on our meeting agenda. Paul or Brian, is there anything else that you wanted to just raise with the board in terms of housekeeping or anything else, or?
Well, we do have a few items that are coming forward. We have three applications that, we had, as we were switching our online permitting system, we had a couple of glitches. But there will be three special permit site plan applications coming to you in two weeks, and then also, there is going to be a remand, which is one that had been appealed and had, the attorneys were working on it for
Tweedy.
Yeah, for the, Tweedy.
Tom.
Tom F., that was the.
Autism Rescuses.
Yes, so that's one that we, yeah, we did go through that in the executive session.
That's not a court order remand, correct?
Yeah. It's a, it's a, we agreed to remand.
Right.
Right, so, we needed to get your meeting scheduled tonight, so I'll work back with Town Council on those, I'll give her the dates for June. So, things are gonna get a bit busy, we've got a few more that are, you will, some new ones that will be coming in in June as well.
So I'm doing the ice creams, expanding footprint?
Um, that, yes, yes, but they have asked us to hold off on that, they actually had a meeting tonight with the Board of Health. I'll talk to the, the health agent tomorrow to see what came of that, and we're ready to, you know, get it to the newspaper and the The Butters, but they wanted to work through the Board of Health at this point. So, as you know, that's been a long issue with noise, so, I don't, you know, we'll see what comes out, but we will.
Really, the ice cream is not a noise issue?
With the, with The Butters, The Trailers, the trailer park.
Well, I knew of the Whole Market Foods one, but I had not heard of any issues with the.
Yeah, it's been, so anyway, there, what I understand is they're trying to rectify that as part of this expansion, but we can't really go into any of that right now. And we'll notice, we'll notify you when that starts to, to shift toward you.
I have just two quick things tapping onto that. Could we try as much as possible not to have any other killer meetings? We've had a couple recently of, you know, it's 11 o'clock and we're still going, I get up early, right? At some point, one of those last moments, I can't even vote on anything, I can't. Those four hour ones are no good for me.
Now that we have the meeting dates, and if we can try and space them out.
I know it happens sometimes, if we could, you know, if it's asking, hey, could we, we have four things already, can we push off to the next one, do you guys mind?
Right.
It'd be appreciated.
We didn't want to overload it and.
Yes, I know it's hard sometimes, but.
Right, right, but.
It can't be avoided sometimes, but if we can do it, it's appreciated.
They were cooperative, so.
And the only other thing that's been really, sorry.
Nope, either.
I really get annoyed when an applicant says, you know, the fire department didn't respond, or this so-and-so didn't respond, and they're here asking for a special permit, they're asking for us to sign off. It's happened multiple times lately, I think it just has to be communicated more to them, that even though they, the email, the notification might have went out to all the departments, it's kind of their job to bring to us, you know? Questions, they're getting multiple times, yeah, I don't like to hear, yes, the fire department approved it. I want to seek that the fire department approved it, or a sign off on, you know what I'm saying?
And that's a product now, switching to OpenGov, where everybody sees it, which again, it's very transparent, but there are times when departments don't sign off on it.
Yeah.
As we go forward with you all, if, if the issue is there, I'll reach out to them and make sure that they do it. That's on us too, to make sure.
We should be using the capabilities of this, you know, we switched to the system at the behest of you know, the folks in town using it, and we should be using its capabilities.
Yeah, well, that, oh, that's.
I'm saying it's more up to the applicant than anything, if they, oh, you know, we reached out to them, never heard back, or you never content, you never sent them another email, you never went back, it's their job to also get it pushed.
Well, the permitting system is supposed to facilitate, it literally is supposed to facilitate it through all of the processes, and all they have to do is check a box and say, yes, I reviewed it, and it looks good.
It's, it's both, I agree.
It's both, we just have to monitor it, but, you know, unless you feel that there is a specific issue that, that there hasn't been a check, then hold it, but if you feel like it's, you know, it's not an issue for them, move forward. And, you know, that's on me too, as a reviewer, to make sure, what, to reach out to them. And it's not difficult, because most of them are on my floor, so.
I think part of it is just, we've done a lot of conditional approvals, especially for like a turning radius or something like that, where it's like, we're not, unless somebody's got the, we did the turning radius, you can see it right here, it's kind of, did the fire department say that they looked at it with their trucks, or they give you your truck model, or that kind of check helps with that process.
This takes time too.
Right. The other, the other thing is we kind of moved through a fresh, also a fresh batch of applicants. I know that at multiple times, we've tried to enforce the pleas getting the applicants to submit all their stuff, like a week ahead of the meeting.
Right.
I admittedly did not push that hard, especially while Brian was doing three jobs at once. But I think it's, we're starting with a new board, let's try and.
You know, the Friday before.
Try to, try to be bad cop first.
Yeah, if we can have it before the weekend. Prior to abort, yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed.
I'm happy with Friday at this point, just give it to me before the weekend, because that's usually when I work.
If we give the applicant, if we tell the applicant we'd like it a week before your step to come with us, that means we can come to the meeting with questions about the materials, not come to the meeting, look at the materials for the first time, and come with questions on the fly. That's the, that's the difference.
Can I get back to one point, I just wasn't clear, when they have reached out to the fire department, things like that, and they come in and say they never got back to me, whose job is it, Jason, is it the applicant's or ours?
They're looking for the town to agree that the project should go forward, so they should be motivated to get those boxes checked, if you might.
Okay, so it's their job to chase?
It's.
It's not, I'm a private sector guy, so.
It's a little bit mutual, but.
Yeah, I, I will do my part to reach out to the departments, but there are times when an applicant needs to directly coordinate. You know, if we're talking about turning radius, they need to work with the deputy chief on that. If, if they don't, then, you know, I'm not going to, I'll do my part to connect them.
So in other words, we'll generally try and be as helpful as we can, that's their job to chase.
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
We do, we, customer service is a lot, I want to make sure, I want to do the best I can do, that when an application comes in front of you, you have the best information possible, you know, doesn't always work that way, but that's the intent, is to get responses from, you know, make sure that the appropriate departments have given responses, and, you know, we try to try to do that, and a big part of that is corral, you know, corralling people, did you reach out to this person or that? That's just part of the territory, but.
If they, if we do our best to connect them, and they do not follow through on that, then they shouldn't be surprised when we act, ask them in the open session. And they don't have a good answer, so.
And they didn't get back to me is not a reason for us to demand. In itself.
I would say generally not, a lot of times what we can do is, we say it's conditionally approved, based on you need to get the fire department's approval in writing before this is, before you can do anything, that's basically how that, if it's a minor thing, if it's more of a major thing, where we want to make sure that they're involved, so something where there's, I'm making something up, something about the storage of flammable chemicals, or something like that, like we probably want a written opinion from the fire chief before we say we're okay with this.
It just avoids another continuance, it just gets it over with quicker.
Yeah, rather than, rather than then come to us, say to the fire department, well, they go back to us, well, we're gonna need that before we do anything tonight, so see you in two weeks, and that doesn't help anybody.
Another important thing for everyone to know is that we always, especially with more complicated projects, we like to have preliminary meetings with staff and the applicant, let them present, and before it comes to you. That way, they, everyone has a chance to identify any issues, again, with the intent of we're trying to help everybody. So if, you know, if we see something where we go, well, the turning radius doesn't look right, that's, we can cap, they can capture that early. So what we're trying to do is identify issues early, that'll also be a time when we can determine, you know, do we, do we want to, you know, do we think a, you know, a peer review is necessary for, to get an engineer to look at stormwater, wetlands, or traffic? So that's an important meeting that, that we'll hold. Particularly, I mean, for the, for the more complicated ones, I mean, if it's a common driveway, no, if it's you know, something like Zero Mansfield, I don't know if that meeting happened, but it will going forward, and that's, that's a practice the town manager started years ago. We were doing it during my first go around, and we're gonna continue to do that. There's a lot of benefits to having that meeting. Again, the goal is to help that the applicant get to their, get their application in the best shape. Or it's a, not that I've seen this, but it's a, wow, this is in bad shape. You really don't want to be presenting this yet. But if we feel it, then we should tell them that, you know, we don't want to send anyone out here going, this doesn't have a chance, it doesn't meet.
They cannot listen to you too.
They can, they can, they can, so. It's just trying to help everybody.
Anything else that you wanted to cover?
No.
And anything else, anybody else in the open session?
One last question, you said Whole Foods?
Home Foods Market's the warehouse on South Worcester Street?
Oh, Food Services, not Whole Foods.
Home Market.
Home Market Foods is the, the tenant in that big warehouse on the back of South Worcester Street.
No, I know, I live around the street.
Yeah.
But not Whole Foods, the stores that I was thinking of, okay.
No.
So does an application from another warehouse, two parcels down?
Yes. Yes.
It's coming. So I'm, if I'm thinking of that, there is something.
Yeah, 360 South Worcester.
Yes.
So, we'll...
That should be fun.
We'll get there when we get there. Focus on the things that are in front of me, and...
Will she adjourn? Second?
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Hearing nothing? Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And we'll go, yes, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody, Peter having...
Hey, everyone, good evening!